To our strategic plan this afternoon and take it away, Dr. McCabe.
Good afternoon, board members. The previous Carroll County Public Schools Strategic Plan in 2018, it started in 2018 and concluded at the end of this past school year. The framework for the strategic plan is defined in Board Policy ADA. This plan serves as a guiding document for our school system. The previous CCPS strategic plan was based on the following four pillars. One, provide multiple pathway opportunities for student success. Two, strengthen productive family and community partnerships. Three, develop and support a successful workforce. And four, establish safe, secure, healthy, and modern learning environments. The strategic plan breaks down each pillar into specific objectives. Each objective also has a priority focus area with clear annual measures of success based on baseline data. In today's work session, we will briefly review the 2018-2023 strategic plan and begin to develop the 2023 through 2026 strategic plan. I am recommending that we develop the next strategic plan based on a three-year window. Mr. O'Neil and Mr. Shachny have worked collaboratively with staff to develop a draft that can be used as a starting point for our next strategic plan. As you are aware, CCPS is working hard to implement the blueprint for Maryland's future. As we work through the draft of the 2023 through 2026 strategic plan, you will see connections to our blueprint implementation plan. I'll now turn things over to Mr. O'Neil and Mr. Shachny, who will guide us through our work today.
Good afternoon, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here today to speak about our strategic plan. In your folder, there's a left side, right side. We're going to work through a few things in that folder. The first thing on the left side is just an agenda and a couple of things that we're hopefully can cover today. The first is just a review of Board Policy ADA. Board Policy ADA defines our strategic planning pillars. And then the associated administrative regulations talk a little bit about the process that is behind the development of the strategic plan. And I've included a copy of the policy and the regulation just after the agenda on the left-hand side. If you look at Board Policy briefly ADA, and I think the first question is, are we still comfortable with the four core pillars kind of framing and guiding our strategic plan? I made an assumption that we are in the development of the draft, but just wanted to first pause and check and see, are we still comfortable with our plan being developed around the four pillars? The one little thing I would recommend, and we can, and obviously I can bring this back at a board meeting, is changing Pillar One's title, simplifying it slightly, to just state academic achievement. And that's kind of the framing and you'll see in the drafts that are there. But I wanted to open that up just for discussion to make sure that we're okay with those four pillars still being the core four driving pillars of the plan.
I appreciate those comments, Nick. I was actually going to make that suggestion for Pillar One. I think we just need, it's about student achievement. It's about academic achievement. And I think we just need to simplify it from that perspective. So especially since we're going to be certainly tracking, you know, test scores and things like that. It's not necessarily just multiple pathway opportunities. And that's more of a kind of a high school concept, I guess, more so than, you know, the lower levels of schools.
And I would like to get back to that. That's what we're here for, is academic achievement. We've kind of got off track, but boy, I want to get back to that.
I was going to say, I too appreciate beginning with questioning whether we want to remain with these four pillars or not, because that was something I questioned as well as I was working through this. I guess my question is, does the staff feel that these four pillars help to guide the work that you all do? And are you finding these four pillars?
I do. They're pretty, they're very balanced. I think they do capture the work that we do. As we'll go throughout this, the blueprint is also a driving factor. There's lots of areas where this plan and the blueprint plan connect and overlap. Because again, I think that's also important as we go to kind of keep that plan in mind, because there's lots of metrics and measures for success built into that plan as well. But again, I think we also need to have the opportunity to be able to identify our own priorities and so forth as we go. But I do feel comfortable that this captures, you know, the work that needs to be done for our students. But ultimately, you know, this plan is your plan, and it's based upon what you all feel is important. So if there's, you know, any adjustments, we can do that.
Okay, and I guess we would just need some kind of verb to fit in front of academic achievement, because the others sort of begin with verbs. Strengthen the productive family, community partnerships, develop, support.
Ensuring, something to that effect.
Okay.
Real quick, is there any way, Pillar Four, because we have here, you know, expect the policies, procedures, and programs to be implemented to promote a safe and orderly environment schools. Is there any way we can also add regulations and guidelines to that paragraph, number four?
Well, all of our guidelines that we develop that also are aligned to the administrative regulations shall or should be aligned to your board policy. There shouldn't be any guideline or regulation that exists that doesn't directly align with your policy. We can include that if you'd like, but just as a, you know, for some peace of mind, you know, our guidelines, you know, when we do develop those, to further clarify a regulation have to be grounded in our board policy. Dr. McCabe?
Yes.
Yeah, it's like a stipulation.
They must be.
Okay, and I just have one more question concerning staff input. How deep in the staff did we go as far as seeking input?
In the development of the draft, the working through our cabinet members and our administrators and our supervisors is about the extent of the dive. But that doesn't mean that this, obviously depending upon what we develop today, can't go out for feedback, or we can seek additional feedback. There's nothing established in the process for how that part can work. So again, after, you know, we get your feedback today and make revisions and we can put that out for additional feedback.
Yeah, I would think administrators and certainly school-level staff, teachers could also have some input.
I guess one of the last comments that I had in terms of the four pillars, like I think these are, as you said, Mr. Shachny, you know, kind of the four primary areas that, you know, significant work is always going on, right? But I kind of almost view it as academic achievement is really the one piece, and everything else kind of supports it, right? Almost like a three-legged stool, right? Like we've got academic achievement on the top, and then the other three pillars kind of support propping that up, right? So I think it does, but I understand the concept of the four pillars. Like we don't need to change that approach. But I like the fact that, you know, academic achievement is certainly the first one. And maybe the verb that you were talking about, Dr. Dorsey, maybe it's, you know, focus on, or, you know, focus on academic achievement, or continuously improve academic achievement, or, you know, something to that effect, knowing that this is our primary objective for the entire school system.
Yeah, definitely.
I can make just one comment. Again, just, I'm the new kid on the block, so I apologize. But Pillar Three, you know, with the, I'm sorry, the successful workforce, Paragraph Three there, I didn't see any mention of like external stakeholders, like our employer groups, our vendors, that kind of thing. So I just didn't know if we could include some language like that to make sure that we're partnering with external stakeholders, such as our workforce, for, you know, the folks that help us outside. It just seems to be really internal employee-centric, but just a thought.
Is that where number two would tie in, the productive family and community partnerships?
It could, yeah. But I was talking about from a workforce perspective, you know, just all the people that reach in and help us from an external perspective.
So you might be thinking about maybe like the bus drivers and.
Drivers, our teacher unions, our food service workers.
They're not technically our employees, but they are part of.
External partners, right. And then also, I don't know if we, again, I've been a part of some organizations where we actually try to look at relationships we have with vendors, suppliers, that kind of thing. But just food for thought, doesn't have to, I'm just putting it out there for discussion.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay. So just after that, just the administrative regulation that talks a little bit about the process about that we're following today and the development of the plan. Obviously, once the plan's finalized, this is a guiding document for our school system. We will make sure, as always, that our decisions align with the strategic plan throughout the course of the year. And then our schools, obviously, as they're working to develop their plans, that there's direct alignment, obviously, with our strategic plan. And then there's a section on monitoring and reporting, which we'll circle back to toward the very end. The final document on the left-hand side of your packet is just an updated visual where I just included, I just renamed that top-left quadrant, the green area of academic achievement. But I understand definitely we can add a verb in there to support that and make us align with the others.
But you don't have the verbage on the graphic.
No, no, yeah, we'll need to include, we'll need to update that. But I do like some of the suggestions that were offered, either ensuring, focusing on, something around continuous improvement. But we'll go back and work on that to come up with something that works and is aligned with the other pillars. Okay, great. All right, on the right half of your packet, you have a couple of documents. The first one, if you could focus on, and it might be the second documented, is the 2018-2023 strategic plan. Because just want to take a moment and just high-level hit a couple of things on the plan from the last five years. I will say before, there is updated MCAP data from this past school year in here. And if I could ask a favor, that we hold on getting too deep into the MCAP data, because, I know, our staff back here is working very hard to do a nice thorough presentation for you at your September board meeting around our MCAP data. But those were metrics that we had built into the plan. So I wanted to make sure that, in a sense, this is closing out the previous plan with all of the data. But we will give you a very thorough, detailed report on our MCAP achievement at your September meeting, I promise.
Only a couple of weeks away, so we can wait.
Almost there, we're almost there. But if you take a look, and again, I'm not going to go deep into this, but just at a very high level, in Pillar One, we had three objectives. Student's exit, college career, and community ready. CCPS improves the proficiency level of each student group in ELA and mathematics. I like using the word student group in lieu of subgroup. And then CCPS provides access to well-rounded, varied, and rigorous curriculum to all students. Our priority focuses are listed there. There were multiple data points for some of those. And then if you go to the document behind it, that identifies all of our participation in that third priority focus area. I will say there's one, it could be also a strength, but also a challenge. There is, there are, there's lots of data in the previous strategic plan. And that's a good thing, but also it becomes a bit of a challenge at times to manage multiple data points. And what helps staff the most, in my opinion, are global kind of, or, you know, higher-level focal points than that the staff can then go back and break down. Obviously, we want to ensure achievement in very specific areas. But you'll notice as we get to the draft of this plan, what's a little bit different is it's a little bit more streamlined, it's a little bit more focused, and the data points that we're trying to narrow in on are a little bit more global. Now, that does not mean that we don't disaggregate, break down, and utilize data. We do that, and I think we do that pretty well to be able to identify what we're doing well and where we need to improve. But that just kind of, I'm kind of setting this up for as we, when we get into the draft of the strategic plan.
And that's one of the things I asked staff to do is for this strategic plan not to have so many varied data points. I'd like staff to be able to look at what we have and be able to focus their work toward that data point. And we all know that if we try to focus on too much, we don't focus on anything. And I don't want staff to lose sight of what the priority data points are. But as Mr. Shachny said, we still, we still will have accountability for all of our data points. We'll still be able to share that. But we were looking to have a plan that was more concise, more readable, and less something that someone would put on a shelf and not refer back to because it was too overwhelming.
And I completely understand and agree with that thought and logic. I think, you know, we've always said that we think that, or at least for the last several years, we've said that we want the strategic plan to be a living, breathing document. We don't want it to be something that we develop now, and then three years later, we come back and say, oh, as an afterthought, how did we do, right? And you don't really, so we had kind of decided, I think, back in 2018 when we developed this, was we needed a dashboard kind of within the context of the strategic plan. Like, these are our SMART goals. This is what we're going to measure ourselves against, because that which gets measured gets done.
Yes.
Right? And so we wanted to say, these are the things that we're focusing on, and we're going to continuously measure ourselves against them to the extent that we can, right? Like, I mean, there's, certain data points are only available at certain, you can't update it every quarter or anything like that. But to that extent, here's kind of our dashboard, which is basically a lot of the MCAP data, right? So I don't know that this level of detail needs to be within the strategic plan, but I still do like having some of these data points in here. And we had basically said, okay, here's our MCAP data, or at the time, it was PARC, right? That we want to make sure that we look at it by the different student groups and things like that. But we also picked a focus area, right, for each level, right? Where we said, okay, for elementary, it's the third-grade reading level. Like, we want to make sure that we're not missing the mark on that one, because it's such a cornerstone, right? And then we said, okay, well, algebra was a focus area, eighth-grade algebra was a focus area for middle school, and then at the high school, it was the pathways. So I think that, I agree that we probably don't need quite this level of detail, but I still think that we want to have some benchmarks or dashboards or like link to an external dashboard to say, okay, here's what we're tracking.
And we will. And that's kind of where I was going next with this is, so we will have a dashboard that we'll develop. The dashboard will also, will be an indicator of success as to the strategic plan. But we can also include other indicators in there that we might feel are essential to our community and for our staff to be able to have real-time. Our staff has real-time access, and performance matters to a lot of our data anyway. But again, we can have some forward-facing data points that obviously show progress on our next plan, but also other key indicators that we feel are important for the community. So as we go today, I've kind of, I'll keep a list of items and ideas that, you know, if it's an important data point to us, do we need to put it in the strategic plan? Or do we need to make it be part of a supplemental piece through our dashboard as well, too? But that's going to be part of this, is that we have that dashboard going at the same time as our next strategic plan. But as a whole, I think you'll see under Pillar One, we made progress in some areas. We made great growth in some areas. And in other areas, we didn't meet our targets. But some successes, you know, the percentage of our students being successful by that comprehension benchmark assessment, which is a local assessment that we've developed. We've returned to, well, we've exceeded the pre-pandemic standard that we have, which is great. However, on the reading inventory, we have not quite returned to the level. But again, these are, these are measures of success, and they've been very helpful. We know that if our students do well on the comprehension benchmark assessment or the CBA, they do well in the MCAP. And that assessment has evolved over time, over the life of this plan. So good growth there. Another positive is our growth on the percentage of students who successfully complete Algebra I by the end of eighth grade. That means they pass the course and they receive the two or higher on the MCAP. So, you know, we dipped just a small bit from the 21-22 year, but we did meet our overall target of 30% there. And again, I don't want to work through every one of these, because there's a lot of data to cover. The second piece, this next page is the participation in CTE honors coursework and AP transcribed courses. And you'll see a lot of growth that happened within those areas, within the identified student groups there. But also, you know, we still need to continue to focus on our students who receive special education services and our students who may be experiencing economic disadvantage or students who have historically received free and reduced meals. After that, there is the MCAP data based upon our targets that we've identified. I think one other thing to identify, and Mr. Ving, you brought this up, the importance of this document being a living document and making sure, as we're looking at our progress on an annual basis, if we meet or exceed a target, I think that target should be adjusted potentially for the following year. And you'll see that set up when we get into the next plan. But I think we also need to do the same thing when we don't achieve a target, making sure we're analyzing why and is our target reasonable? And that's where, there's been a lot of work that went in, too, as we get to the draft plan, what are reasonable targets over a three-year window? So we'll talk a little bit more about that.
Yeah, and Mr. Shachny, just in terms of the PARC MCAP data that is in here, I know, I don't want to dig too deep into a lot of questions, because I know, you know, staff is working on a presentation for the next board meeting. But there are some things that really jumped right off the page, you know, when kind of looking at it this way. And one of the things was that we actually went up across the board for our ELA categories, right, between 2017 and 2018 for ELA.
Yes.
Between the 17-18 year and the 22-23 year, we went up in almost every category. But in the same vein, for math, we went down in almost every category. And, you know, and we've got the pandemic in there, obviously. It doesn't feel right. It feels like there's something wrong with the data, right? Like, what would be the cause of, like, why would we go up in every category in ELA and down in every category in math? Like, you would think that the pandemic would have had an impact kind of more across the board. Like, is there something wrong with the data? Or is there something wrong with the alignment of the standards?
Well, two things that I can add there is that nationwide, our math data as a nation during the pandemic did not keep up with our ELA data. It just didn't. And one of the reasons that some of the researchers are using to explain that is that, you know, most states are using Common Core. And one of the features of Common Core is that it is not a spiraling curriculum. You know, ELA, even in Common Core, the content and the standards spiral from grade level to grade level. One of the concerns with Common Core, even when it first came out, was that it does not spiral. So if you don't comprehend or understand an objective or a standard at one grade level, you may not get it the next. It may be years before you encounter that again. And that creates the opportunity for many more learning gaps than the way ELA is written. And with that, I'll look back to our math folks in the back and see, is there anything that you'd like to add to that? And if so, please go to the podium.
Hi. To address that, I just want to add on to what Dr. McCabe said, because everything, that was beautifully said. We also know that families during the pandemic were reading with their children, maybe not doing concrete, hands-on math, conceptual learning with their children. So we know that. So we're digging out of that. And at the elementary, we're making small gains. If you look on your chart there, and we'll talk about that more, elementary, small gains, three, four, and five. And we are looking at ways to continue those gains. But I think there's a lot of work to be done, and we'll talk more, you know, at our next meeting. But we're ahead of ourselves.
Because I was just thinking, I mean, Dr. McCabe had mentioned about the spiraling effect not being in place. I mean, if we know that, if we know that as a fact, what can we do?
That's a great question, Dr. Dorsey. One of the things that we're going to start doing this year in elementary principals' meetings is talking about some best practices that we see in schools that our best teachers are doing, and that's one of them. We can, I can look at our benchmark scores, talk with the teachers of those high scores, and one that comes up regularly is they weekly spiral.
Yes.
It's old school, it's old school, and it works. And we need that to be a common practice, frankly.
And that would even benefit things like SATs and.
And there's tremendous benefit in our local assessment data. We, you know, obviously, we have MCAP data that is, you know, cumulative assessment. But we rely heavily on our local assessment data as that check and balance between curriculum, instruction, and assessment. You know, obviously, if you remember, there's that triangle. Each one of those points are very interdependent on each other. And obviously, our assessment data should be driving, you know, through our assessment, we can identify what are our students doing well and where are the students struggling? And then making sure that we have consistent assessments being implemented. At the elementary level, historically, we've, you know, we have implemented unit assessments throughout the curriculum and then as well as a mid-year and an end-of-year assessment. So there's lots of data there. We are, we have, Mr. Milkie is back there, I don't want to steal his thunder, but has been working very hard, and we implemented common end-of-year assessments at the secondary level. So we have data from that, and our data from that assessment, you know, anecdotally, from a high-level view, is similar to our MCAP data. Our students are struggling. So now they're going back and identifying which standards, where are our students struggling, and is our written curriculum the delivered curriculum? Because again, part of the challenge with this is making sure that we're teaching what's in the curriculum, that we don't get sidetracked, we don't get off pace, or we don't add something because it's something we've always liked to do, but making sure that we're teaching our curriculum. And Dr. McCabe's message back to our staff this year said, you know, just that, if we teach our curriculum, our kids are going to do just fine, which is completely the case. But there always are times that, you know, we then need to revise our curriculum based upon how our students are doing, based upon that. So I know that the secondary folks are working hard to develop more unit assessments to support that end-of-course assessment as well, too. But, Mr. Milkie, I don't want, I feel like I'm talking a lot, but I probably should be quiet unless you speak.
No, it's all good. So, yeah, we have a lot of learning gaps to close from pandemic. And one of the things that we are embedding into our instruction is a Tier Two intervention for math, for IXL Math. So we are going to be able to more rapidly close those learning gaps. Mr. Shachny and Dr. McCabe said it excellent, as well as Mr. Hicks, about the spiraling effect. But what we are doing is using a tool that will help us reach back to those skills. So that's what that Tier Two intervention does. In along with the common assessments, we have dissected the blueprint for MCAP from Algebra I and the middle school six through eight. And as we revamp our curriculum and our common unit assessments, we are tying to those standards and the evidence statements of those standards. So we don't teach or assess above the standard for all. Of course, there's always opportunity for enrichment for students. That's always, always needs to be there. But when we assess our students, we want to make sure we're hitting those exact standards. So we are revamping the curriculum to get more lead data measures with the common unit assessments. We are aligning our end-of-course assessments more closely to MCAP. So we are embedding a lot of strategies into our next phase to close these gaps. The one thing I will mention about the question about the decreases in the scores pre-pandemic, just one thing to note is that Algebra I was a graduation requirement pre-pandemic. After the pandemic, it was not. It was a participation. So that may be one thing in terms of the high school data that, you know, we're battling against, because it was a graduation requirement that would lead to students doing a bridge project if they didn't pass. And so that, taking that piece out of this is something that we're working, working to try and.
That does make a huge difference, because when I was in teaching, they had that. And it does make a very big difference.
It does. So that's what we're working against.
Thanks for bringing that up. Yeah, because people need to know that.
Do we, I mean, there's nothing to stop us from making Algebra I a graduation requirement, though, is there? And like at CCPS and continuing to build the curriculum.
I'm going to get, when we get into the draft plan, we have a strategy to address that through our, through the college and career readiness standard, which includes proficiency on the English 10 MCAP as well as the Algebra I MCAP. I'll get, we can talk about that more if that's an idea you want to. I'll, I'll get, we can talk about that more if that's an idea you want to explore. But but we've already, knowing that this is an area of weakness, that's, that is a priority focus area in the next plan, wrapped around CCR, which is a tenet of the blueprint. But it also has tremendous weight for us, because that means if a student CCR by the current standard, it means that that student has six, by the end of 10th grade, they've passed the English 10 MCAP as well as the Algebra I MCAP.
Okay.
And I'm just thinking back to, you know, the, going over the the benchmark assessments and doing those item analyses, you know, sometimes we found that the questions really didn't match the skill that we were trying to test.
There's tremendous benefit of that. And that's when you look at, you basically, in a simplest way, you take all the students in a, in the class down this column, all the questions across the top, and you identify where the errors were. And if you see a whole bunch of errors, like on question 20, for example, there's either, either that as a teacher, that's something I didn't really hit really well was question 20, or maybe question 20 was worded in a way that confused the the students and didn't maybe necessarily assess the the indicator as clearly as we would have liked. And that's part of that annual process for curriculum development and then the assessment development as well, that the teams work so hard to do. Because again, our, our common assessment should be, you know, should be revised and evolve over time, based upon the success of our kids.
Right. And I think, and I really appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Milkie.
Yeah, sure.
And Mr. Shagni, it's great that we're on top of this. We kind of understand what the needs are and how we're going to revise it. And I'm glad to hear about the unit tests, right? Because we don't just want to be measuring against the annual assessments for MCAP. I mean, these are very much lag indicators, and it's almost like too late to do anything about it once we get these results, right?
No, we've implemented the four disciplines of execution by Covey in our schools. And that, you know, that implores us to have lead data measures and keep scoreboards so that we know where we are in relationship to achieving our goals.
Right. So the unit tests are the, that's the way that we can measure it on much more ongoing basis?
Yes, definitely.
And and we, we probably want to think about reporting it in the dashboard that way, right?
That's a great idea for a dashboard, yes. Yep, great idea.
It's almost like, it's an after, like, Park and MCAP, it's like, yeah, it's, it's almost an afterthought, right? Like, okay, we did well or we didn't, but there's no, it's too late to do anything about that. Like, let's, let's build the the muscle memory of.
Yep.
What what we always say is, if you have, if you have decent lead data, you should always know how your students are going to do on MCAP. That should never be a surprise.
Right. And and your, your unit tests and your lead indicators should, and if we think that, okay, our students should have done a whole lot better this year, then if they didn't, then then you can use that information to kind of circle back around and say, okay, where did it?
That's a great example of what schools do. Obviously, they take our goals that we, you know, that we have identified, but then, you know, they're doing just that, they're breaking it down, and they're being able to identify those lead measures. And again, that's a, you know, a regular part of, you know, Dr. McCabe's visits to schools, my visits to schools, the school directors' visits to schools, where that is part of our dialogue and discussion, where we're talking specifically about those schools' goals and and the progress that they're making, which then directly aligns to their school improvement plan, directly aligns to the work being done at the team level and then at the teacher level. So there's, there's definitely a, an alignment to all the work being done that sometimes doesn't always get captured in the public, doesn't necessarily always see those big pieces. And I think that's great that we're articulating that to start to, to help understand, help folks understand the work that happens in our departments and in our schools and our teams and in our classrooms. It's, that's the, the structure that exists. But again, I think the, probably our area of of greatest opportunity and growth are with those, those, those common assessments, especially at the secondary level, especially in the area of mathematics. You know, there's tremendous opportunity there, and the group's been working very hard with staff to to get those pieces going.
How is, do we still have funding for tutoring to offer students that need it? Or is that something that's going at this point?
So, so not, not like what we did as a result of recovery from the pandemic. However, schools do get very creative in their supplemental supports for students. There are interventions that they offer during the student day. And I think that is key, too. Interventions, we want happening during the student day. We, we want great core first-pass instruction that's aligned to the standard. Don't get me wrong, that's always important. But we also then need to be able to target those supports. And that is another piece, and that's what Mr. Milkie was, was referencing with a new intervention that's going to be out there. That's been also a, a big part of the additional blueprint funding that we've been able to identify and deploy this year, especially in the area of compensatory education, that that new funding that we have. That's been a, a great opportunity to target additional resources and then interventions with that to go along with it. So not tutoring, like, in its sense, like we were doing through our extended learning opportunities or after-school, but schools are still doing those things. And and at any point in time, if a, if a parent is concerned about a student in their process, start with that, with the child's teacher. Have that conversation, because the teacher's going to be able to articulate the, the little extra things that they're doing during the course of the day, and then can also get them connected if there's some other things happening, maybe an after-school program, those kinds of things that are going on. But the, you know, the child's teacher is a great place to start if a parent's concerned about progress, just needs a little bit of information, or wants to learn about what other supports exist.
Can you remind me where we are with our elementary math resource positions?
So, Mr. Hicks, you can correct me if I'm wrong, with, with, with the implementation of the additional compensatory education, we have a math, full-time math resource teacher in every elementary school, correct?
Every elementary school except, maybe over there?
Come on, ever. Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Hicks.
Great exercise. Now, with, with the additional positions that we, we were able to hire seven more math resource teachers. So we have a full-time math resource teacher in every school except for the following schools that, which we have a half-time person. Linton Springs shares their math resource teacher with Piney. And Freedom shares their math resource teacher with Carrolltown. And Eldersburg has a half-time person. Everyone else has full-time now.
But we're, then that's plus seven from the previous year. So we were able to grow by, by seven with the additional compensatory education funds.
I'm sorry, Mr. Hicks, could you hit those again? It was Linton, Freedom.
Were the ones that have half-time?
Yes.
Yes. It's Linton, Freedom, Carrolltown, Piney, and Eldersburg.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
And we'll keep that in mind as well as we're looking at the data.
Absolutely. This ought, this will be exciting.
Now, is this something that a club such as, like, National Honor Society, that they can get involved in?
Most definitely.
Get with the elementary schools, get with the middle schools and high school students to, like, hey, you know, we'll, we'll have a little after-school tutoring, or, or even if parents can get ahold of somebody to come help their students.
The NHS program, I don't want to, I'll let you speak to that, because that's a tremendous resource for our students.
So one thing that we should note is some schools already have something like this in placement. It's basically an after-school tutoring program. This is usually given by teachers with the help of students on the side who are increasingly good at these specific subjects. So let's say Liberty High School has this after-school tutoring program. Tuesdays are for math, Wednesdays are for languages, Mondays are for ELA. After-school, you're given help from a teacher who's in that area, and then a student can also help. And this isn't limited to only NHS. It's just students who are very diligent in that specific subject. So a lot of schools, including Century, I know Westminster has something like this. It's something that teachers have already been trying to implement, but with the support of the board would definitely be helpful.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, I think it's something that definitely we need to tap into. I mean, we have these wonderful organizations that our students are heavily involved in. You know, they, you see scholarships received for them, you see, you know, medals and pins and everything. And I think it is important, it's, I mean, it's even a great resource, you know, to student service learning hours. I mean, there's, there's so many parts to it that if someone who is in that organization can go to the other schools and help, you know, if they can drive or whatever the magnitude, you know, working with the teachers and the staff of that, you know, for that student would help whatever they possibly can. And I think, you know, definitely reaching more into that, I think that is extremely beneficial.
Oh, and along with that, we also have students who are in student aid positions for teachers, and often, more than not, these student aides can be mostly just doing paperwork when we can help put student aides towards these tutoring services as well.
Absolutely.
Just another option.
Excellent.
Are we consistent with how we do that across the high schools? I, I knew about the Westminster program, because my daughter is involved in Spanish and math for that, but I wasn't sure about all the high schools.
Mr. King confirmed, yes. Said maybe it was some slight variations, but every NHS programs off, offers some sort of tutoring supports.
Okay.
Is there a way we can publicize that a little bit more? Because I think that's something we always do here in some emails, is I don't know how to get help from my child, you know? I don't understand it, so I don't, I can't help them any. So I think it kind of needs to be kind of publicized a little bit more, that these are opportunities available for elementary and middle school students.
Sure. All right. To, to try and move this along, because I'm, I would love to be able to get into the draft and start to talk, but these are great, great conversations. If we could switch to, to pillar two, in the, this is the previous, previous strategic plan.
Mr. Shagni, I'm sorry, just, just before we move on to pillar two, I just wanted to make one kind of final comment about pillar one, where like, you know, when, when we're looking at these results, especially on math, it's great to hear that, you know, we've got action plans in place and we're, and, you know, our strategic plan, we can kind of decide what, what our measurable goals are, right? But it's, there's a lot of work going on in that direction. But as we try to tie this all to, you know, the blueprint, it's all kind of loosely tied to the blueprint, I, I would like to point out, you know, this is prob, it's kind of pretty obvious, but we've got significant improvements that we've got to make on the math side. And I would say, you know, if we're kind of forced to increase class size across the board from, you know, 25 to 45 or 50, like, there is absolutely no way, like, that that is going to be conducive to improving math results. Like, and I, I think that we've got to make that known loud and clear to the state. Like, I, I, I know that they don't particularly care about, or we don't perceive that they particularly care about class size, but there's no way that ramping up our class sizes dramatically as part of blueprint could have a beneficial effect on these kind of results.
Absolutely. There's no positivity in that, in that at all with those numbers going up. No.
It's interesting that you say that, because, you know, some of what is in the blueprint, we would have been trying to do and accomplish anyway, because it's just good practice. Other strategies that the, that the blueprint has us implementing, we don't necessarily feel that it's going to enhance our academic achievement. And as you said, we feel that it will, it will hamper what, what we know to be the best strategies to use for our students here.
Right. It's going to end up being punitive to, to the, you know, it's like, okay, there's going to be some benefit to the underperforming groups, right? Some benefit, but it's going to be hugely benefit, hugely punitive to all the other students.
Right.
Right? Like, it's not a continuous improvement for everybody. It's just a, you know, maybe some improvements for certain groups and deterioration for others.
Right. And again, that's because we will, in Carroll County, have to take supports away from certain students in order to give them to other students. We can't, because blueprint isn't new money, it's not new money, it's telling us how to use our established funding, the only way we can implement it is to take from one and give to another.
Right. And I think that we have to scream that as loud as we possibly can, along with other jurisdictions and, you know, at the state level, so.
That was one of the things that we had discussed at our joint meeting, for example, is, and compensatory ed is, is, is our biggest, is one of our biggest challenges. But, you know, the restrictedness of additional funds or new funds beyond what we already have, we, we can deploy that very strategically within, you know, the restricted guidelines identified. But it's then when we're having to take existing resources, that's where it all starts to, to become a significant challenge for us. Because again, you know, when we, you know, we, we can work within, you know, when there's restricted resources for, for, for additional funding, it's just that, it's the current pieces that makes, you know, life very difficult for us. And being able to meet our, our goals of advancing our students, but no doubt about it, class size is going to have a, a significant impact in our ability to move, to move forward.
Right. I mean, I think it's very easy to speak anecdotally towards, you know, what we think the, the negative repercussions are for, from the blueprint. But this, this is something very specific that we can point to, saying this is only going to make things worse.
Yeah.
Right.
But given a, an unprecedented pandemic, which impacted us during the, you know, we, we've made some great strides. We still have lots of work to do, as, as always. And, and we are committed to doing that, and we will continue to do the work that's needed to, to advance our students and, and improve where there needs to be improvement, and celebrate where we're doing well, and, and build on that. We don't ever, you know, sit back on our, on our, our successes. We have to, we have to continuously involve, evolve and, and improve our, our work.
And again, we're continuing to set high standards and, and high targets. So we're not saying, okay, because the kids aren't performing, we'll just lower.
Correct.
On the expectation. So, you know, I think we, we have the right vision in mind.
All right. So pillar two is all about strengthening productive family and community partnerships. Again, I think if you looked at it in its totality, from where we were in, you know, the baseline of the 1718 school year and even into the 1819 school year to where we, we finished, we made some great strides. We know that the engagement and participation of our community advisory council has been essential and important, and we've made improvements there. There's still work to be done with that and getting all of our schools actively engaged and participating in that group. I think you'll see that come back in the, in the next, in the, in the draft that we're about to, to share. And then our outreach, and there's multiple indicators there on our outreach. They've evolved, some of them have evolved a little bit over time, but, but we've had, you know, great growth over the, over the course of the plan when it comes to this work. Any questions about pillar two?
I will say that that international telephone line, and it has doubled in the number that we've been able to help people. That's, that's wonderful.
And I put a little asterisk there, because it's gotten to the point where it, this is a great thing, that families are, are reaching out directly to the liaisons, like, that we've, and that's a great indicator, because I know if you look at it slightly, that the number is down. But I, I would also say it's probably a very good thing, because we, that means we've developed a great relationship between the liaison and a family, and that, and that parent knows where to go for help.
It will go back up.
So.
It is, it is.
Which is.
And I like the target that you've set, you know, to double that, so, anyway. Twenty, well, 22, 23. But it's amazing how many people use that.
Yep. The group works very hard for our students. Pillar three, develop and support a successful workforce. Mr. O'Neil, anything you want to hit on that?
We had the three objectives, you're, you're very familiar with this, and like Mr. Shagni, I, I want to make sure you have enough attention on the, on the next version of the plan. So our focus is here had been on recruitment and retention of all employees and, and some sort of comparative measures between our non-minority employees and minority employees. And then as, as one additional strategy, we had focused on trying to increase the number of open contracts offered to minority candidates. And I think we discussed, I remember discussing this not that long ago in one forum, and, and that's an area where we fell a little bit shorter than where we would have wanted to. I, I think there's some explanations for that, and in some ways, they have to do with how recruitment had to occur over the pandemic period. Not as much in-person at all, not as, or, or much more sort of virtual job fairs, or just sort of relying on generating applicants via the internet rather than being able to be face-to-face. And, and this is, we, we've talked about this over a lot of time. This is a touchy area, because those are not demographics that you can legally collect on candidates. You can collect them separate from their application and then marry them together after you hire people. And so there's a challenge. I guess what I'm trying to get to is, it's a greater challenge when recruitment stopped occurring or was very much hindered in occurring in the more traditional way of being able to be face-to-face with candidates, where you could sort of know that information just from sitting across from somebody. Trying to honor Nick's rule here of keeping old plan separate from, from new plan, except to say that, that, when we get to the new plan, we have some, some different focus areas for pillar three that are exactly aligned to the blueprint. However, this work remains of, of great importance to us as a school system. It's also important in the blueprint. And so one of the elements that was required in, under the blueprint by the AIB in year one is that every school system in Maryland complete the same report annually. It's, I think the title of it is the Hiring and Diversity Report. And so now for, at least for the first time that I, that I've been aware of in my career, it appears that they're going to continue that moving forward. And so now there is an actual baseline of a direct external comparison, which we've And so now there is an actual baseline of a direct external comparison, which we've always sort of struggled to have. Like, what is the retention rate in other school systems? What is the retention rate for a specific group of employees in another school system? We'll have that now going forward under the blueprint, so there's a blueprint positive. And I think one of the points Nick is going to make tonight, or maybe I'm supposed to at the, at the right time, is we, we would also envision that our local dashboard could link to external sources as well. And so, so for pillar three, while you'll see in a bit that we're suggesting a bit of a different focus as far as the plan itself, we would see that as, as, as linked information via our data, our data dashboard, because it's certainly important to the superintendent, the leadership of the school system, and to Mr. Diaz in his office as well. Any questions on pillar three? We'll move right into pillar four.
Just, just do you want to point out, though, that we did meet the target? So we actually exceeded the target, so that, that's good news.
We did, and we're right at sort of the sweet spot of statewide retention. We, the, the new state superintendent has been reporting out on statewide retention as well. And so perhaps there's two ways in which that data will be tracked going forward, if that becomes a standard at, at M S D, or what they call the department. So that, that's helpful to have external data, instead of trying to, trying to wrestle it away from others to, to, you know, to have it going forward.
John, I have a question real quick, I'm sorry. Back on the, the family and community partnerships, and I'm sorry to go backwards, the apprenticeships. Because I know per blueprint, that's part of the, you know, getting the, the businesses to work with C C P S and having the apprenticeships for students. Have we made strives and more businesses are willing to partner up?
So, yes, I'll take that if you don't mind. So, and you're going to see that, that's, that is a priority focus area in the next strategic plan to increase specifically the apprenticeships, because we have tremendous internships, but the blueprint's going to require us to increase our apprenticeships. And that's the piece where, where there's a lot of work that can be done there. So I'll get into that a little bit more, but yes, that is very much a factor in our, in our next, in our next plan as well.
Okay, good, thank you.
For, for pillar four, which was the, which has been the safe, secure, healthy, modern learning environments, there's a couple of, of objectives and then focus areas that, that have dealt with the operational parts of the school system, and some that are more school-based, so I think Mr. Shagni will handle those. But the first couple, the first one had to do with their school security program, and that was to work with our tech services department to have a, ultimately, this became an app, so that our schools can perform their, their annual school safety evaluations on an app, and therefore we have a common database, and we have, you know, we have a baseline of, of all the metrics we would want to know about common to all schools. That's already happened, and, and it was in place for this year, and so we, we do have one year of data, and we can build upon that. We're recommending focusing on training in, in the next version of the plan, and I'm trying not to skip back and forth. So we can talk more about what, what the board would prioritize there. Our focus has shifted a little bit to training, but, but this task was accomplished, and therefore we do have the metrics going forward. And then the second one, the, the F C I, or the Facility Conditions Index, Condition Index, has been something that, that appears to have been important to the board, and so we, we are suggesting moving it forward. I would, I would say, I guess the conversation we, we'd be interested in having with, with you this evening is if you agree that you would like to move that forward into the next version of the plan. The goal of maintaining the F C I is certainly a laudable goal of the Board of Ed, but then the Board of Ed is, is, is specifically subject to the funding authorities on, on how much of the capital, your capital request gets funded. And so I think, like, the conversation that's probably worth having is, if you, if you want to retain it, do you want to retain it in this way where it's sort of, you're trying to maintain the F C I? Or do you want to sort of reword this, this focus area to be something more like, the board submits an annual capital request that would retain the, the school system's F C I? Because you're at, you're at mercy of the state and the county, and they're at mercy of available revenue.
I think it's important to have.
Your goal is to do your best to keep that F C I from moving in the negative way, in, in the way that's less favorable.
I think it's important to have, I mean, I think it's really important for us to see where our buildings are and making sure we are maintaining them, we are making sure things are fixed properly, we're not falling behind on any maintenance that needs to be conducted, because not doing them makes things worse. So I think it's important to make sure we keep in the strategic plan, to know where we are on it, and, and know where we go forward for capital funding.
Yeah, and I think it's very apropos, you know, that we, they were talking about the F C I on the day that we toured the new East Middle School. I think it's for that very reason. So I, it's not necessarily the F C I score per se, but it, this is a score that, you know, Bill and, and, you know, guys did a great job of creating a proxy, something that we can use as a measurement to tell the story to the commissioners of, okay, th- this is an aggregate score of, of the maintenance condi, or the condition of each of our school buildings, and we cannot allow this to deteriorate significantly. We're going to end up right back in the same situation that we were in five, six years ago, when we were talking about closing schools. Right, like, it's, it's problematic, right? So that, I think this is something that's very important to keep an eye on. To your point, like, we don't necessarily, we can't necessarily impact it all by ourselves, right? Like, it's dependent on what the commissioners, but I, I think that we hold ourselves accountable to being able to tell the commissioners the story, and this is, this is what the strategic plan is in terms of how we have to work on the, the condition of, of the overall, of the buildings in our overall system.
It's very important for, for them and us as well to be very aware of, we might have a sinking ship or two, and we're going to need help. So I think that we need to be upfront, upfront, and I think, you know, everyone needs to understand that.
Right, and it's in the, it's in the bigger scheme of things, right? Because it's like, okay, well, if, the storyline is that, you know, we have forty buildings in our, in our system, right? If the average lifetime of a school before significant renovations or new building is needed is forty years, then that means we need to be doing one building per year. We're not at that pace, right? And there's not enough funding at, to, to be going at that pace. So we need, we need to recognize the larger problem and make sure that we have a plan and place to deal with it, all at the same time that we're trying to deal with the blueprint as well, right?
And that there's no surprises, you know, you know, so, not that we're going to have a wall fall down or anything like that, but, you know, it's very.
We're making conscious decisions, right?
Right.
It's not just kind of quietly crumbling behind the scenes, but that we're making conscious decisions based on the, the priorizations that we have to make.
So I think I'll let, and then Mr. Shagni wants to wrap up. We'll continue this conversation in a few minutes on the new version.
And the final portion to pillar, pillar four, excuse me, includes our discipline data. And I'll start off with a, with a caution in the interpretation of the data.
Does that not to see the red?
Yes. Because there, there are a lot of targets that, that weren't met. But I think we have to keep in mind that when we developed the initial plan, no one could have forecasted a, a pandemic impacting us that, you know, had all of the, the challenges, including, you know, lack of, 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 of being able to be in school and to have the resources that, that we know our, our kids need. Yes, we were, we, we worked very hard to, to recover from that. But I think, obviously academically, we, we know a lot, we know some students were significantly impacted when it comes to their, their social, emotional, and behavioral well-being. So yes, in the end, we did not meet some targets. But I want to be clear, at no point in time are we changing, or have we changed, our expectations for students and student behavior. And if anything, I think the data speaks that we continue to hold kids accountable for the expectations that we've identified.
And I, and I'll add to that, that in some educational circles, low suspension data is supposed to equal positive school culture and safety. And I think the danger in that is setting up a system in which administrators feel that they can't suspend students when they need to. And so I think we have to be very careful to support our administrators, because they need to support our teachers in the classroom. And if a student does need to be removed, or a referral needs to be given, or a suspension, while we want that to be balanced with support, positive supports for the students, we cannot be a system that does not allow administrators to discipline in a way that is effective and that changes behavior.
This has had the complete opposite, the, the not being able to suspend has had the complete opposite effect as what was intended. Is there, is there anything to be done about that? Can we demonstrate it? Can we work with other counties to, to see if they're seeing the same thing? Like, it's just, it's not working.
Well, I know that we talk about it as superintendents when we get together monthly, and I know that the directors of Student Services talk about this as well when they meet. Mr. Streeker, is there anything that, that you want to add about the suspension data or how it's being looked at statewide to add to the conversation?
Miss, I guess the thing I would bring up is what's happening across the state in the juvenile justice situation has happened to Carroll County Public Schools and all of Maryland in twenty fifteen, sixteen. So that's when the law changed about suspensions and different things like that, twenty fifteen, sixteen. So a, while schools have felt that, and I think have seen some challenges with that since that implementation, we've also worked harder and, and stretched ourselves to meet the needs of kids better as well. I think there's, there's two sides to that. What I think we're seeing in the current climate in the, in the state, throughout the state, with several prosecutors and whatnot frustrated about the juvenile justice reform, parallels at some level, and perhaps heightened because it's hitting in the community, what we've been navigating in the school system since fifteen, sixteen. So what can we do? I think that level of advocacy that's happening there might be advocacy that could be taken from a, from a local perspective of, of allowing schools, you know, about, to ensure the safety of all kids in the school, and the climate and culture in, in the school to be positive. There are times where our, the length, like, you know, our, our suspension is limited. We're very, we have a very supportive community in our, in our system, which we're very fortunate with, that our folks will work with us, because they want the best for their kids when they're in the wrong, as well as when they're wrong. So that's a, something we enjoy, that I'm not sure everybody enjoys throughout the state. But I do think, it's curious to me, as I, as I see that unfolding within the state, with the, the criminal behavior in this, in the state, you know, and thinking back to in fifteen, sixteen, the changes here. So it's, I do think there's parallels to that.
And again, that distinct student or those repeat offenders.
That's a very powerful point to make, is the, the distinct number identified in the, in the chart. And again, for some of those students, that might mean one of the referral of that category. For one of those students, it might mean multiple referrals within that, within that category. And that's where our, our schools are true problem solvers, just like they treat a, a student with a, with a reading challenge. If a student is struggling to be successful, either socially, or emotionally, or behaviorally, they're working through and putting interventions in place. And I think that's where, you know, that distinct student group, and obviously it's a tiered approach that we take. But, but again, some of our students account for a lot of our referrals, and that's where the challenges come into play. But the key to that oftentimes, and it never, it, it doesn't get reflected in the data necessarily, is when a student might start to struggle, a school intervenes and changes that behavior around. And that does happen, and in collaboration with our families, with our community resources, and our schools. But that often doesn't get captured in the data. So I think, in hindsight, you know, five years removed from the development of this, I think, you know, we, we've learned a lot from this, but again, also laws have evolved and, and changed over that time. But I think the power still is in our schools and their ability to problem solve. And, and, and like Dr. McCabe had started with, you know, we want our schools to utilize our discipline system to effectively communicate with both student and parent, and to help reshape, that's what discipline is all about. How about changing behavior? And, and we want that to continue. So yes, there are some increases, yes, there are some areas in which we didn't meet our targets, but I still feel that we're maintaining our expectations for what we expect in our schools and in and of our students. And our students who are there, great, we reward it, and our students who are not there, we work to, to, to get them there.
And I will say, it only takes one to upset the apple cart, but we have a lot more lanes or availability of things to help these children out, though, than we did twenty years ago. It's really changed, and I, I hope it's to the better.
And we've just made a significant investment in our social, emotional well-being of our students through our, our programs, and then the, a lot of the resources through that compensatory education lens are in this area as well also.
And the one additional thing I would add to that is that, you know, teachers are, are very good at handling these situations, but it's, it's tough for them. Like, if there's one, you can, one kid in the class that's disruptive, you can handle it. When it becomes two, it's a little tougher. When it becomes three, it's almost untenable, right? Like, it just disrupts everything, right? So.
It takes away from the educational teaching of all the other students. And then that's when we really need to nip it in the bud.
Right, and, and.
And it's not fair, excuse me, it's not fair for those teachers, because I've been there, and I've seen it. And I was there at Manchester Elementary during COVID, and I watched it myself, and it just, it just upsets everything. I didn't mean to cut you off, but it, you know, one comes to two, comes to three, and then that poor teacher cannot do what she is supposed to be doing.
Right, yeah, and I was just going to, like, another dig of, you know, larger class sizes is.
Absolutely, no, it's not.
It just becomes a situation where, in a setting like that, one tries to one-up the other, and it does get untenable. But I've said it in closed, and I'll say it in open, to make sure everyone knows this. Going back to Dr. McCabe's comments, for me personally, I want to see ground truth as it relates to discipline. I don't want any principal or any teacher to feel like they're not empowered to do what they need to do, to instill discipline in their classroom. I don't care how many referrals I see on this paper, I really don't. I don't want any teacher to feel like they can't do what they have to do to make sure that they focus their environmental learning. So I don't really care about the numbers. So I just, teachers need to be empowered, so do, so do our principals.
Was it this, these measures are almost a double-edged sword, right? Like, you don't want folks to not report things or not take the proper actions because they're worried about not meeting a target on this report, but it's something that you need to track, right? In order to understand the situation and what's going on. So maybe, maybe we don't have targets, but maybe we just track it to understand what the situation is.
Right, but as you can see, it might be only one student, and they've had twenty-five times there, and that has happened, I know that for a fact.
That distinct student percentage is, is significant for, for each of the ones.
And I, and you said this earlier, I mean, and again, especially at the elementary level, you know, you have to invest in the kids. You know, you really do have to pour yourself into them as far as helping them understand, understand what the rules are and how they're supposed to follow the rules. And, I mean, I can remember the beginning of school years, if, if we had some students who, you know, really hadn't learned how to be a part of a school, well, it took the assistant principal, the counselor, myself, and, you know, we spent our time investing in those kids, sitting down with them in the classroom and, you know, helping to, to teach them. So again, we can't forget that piece of it, you know, just like you mentioned, they don't know how to read, you teach them reading, so if they don't know how to behave, we have to teach them.
All right, if we're okay then, let's, let's jump into the draft plan. I know we've kind of naturally blurred all, already. If you'll take a look at it, the structure is essentially the same. There, there are four pillars as well. You have the tabs across the top, which identify, you know, each of the four pillars. For pillar one, we have two objectives. The first, C C P S improves the early literacy proficiency of each student group identified in the blueprint for Maryland's future. And then secondly, C C P S students are college and career-ready as identified in the blueprint for Maryland's future. So again, we talked about there'd be natural connections to the blueprint as we went. But the first objective, that, that reading by nine, or reading by the end of the third grade, continues to be a focal point, and should be, in, in my opinion, moving forward, because so much happens when a student, so much can happen when a student is reading and ready to read at the right time. And we know that, and we've known that for, for, for some significant time. So I also channeled my, my, my inner special educator, because I wanted to make sure as we develop the priority focus areas, we had very clear targets. It was very, what we were measuring is very clear, and we had very clear baseline data as we go. So in that first priority focus area, it says by twenty twenty-six, which is three years, C C P S will increase the percentage of students scoring proficient on the English Language Arts Grade Three Maryland Comprehensive Assessment Program, or M C A P. So it is coming back to. So it is coming back to that MCAP piece. Now, that does not mean that we won't use multiple data points to measure the effectiveness of our instruction and getting back to our CBA and all those other pieces. That will still happen. If you look at our current, and as you work across, there's a column for our baseline, which is from this past school year. And then there's a year, and then for each year, year one, there's a target. There's an empty space for our performance and then did we meet or not, which would be a simple yes or no. But then also that target is, you know, is adjusted over the three years. For the all student group, we're presently at 62.8% proficiency. Very clearly, we want to increase a percent proficient by 12.2% from the baseline of 68, 62.8% to 75%. So I want to be very clear in what we were measuring, what our targets were going to be. As always, and I've, as a principal, I've said this, as director, I've said this, and in my present role, I'll say this. Obviously, when we set a target, and in our end target being 75%, we want to set a realistic attainable goal. That doesn't mean that we don't value and work to get all of our students to where they need to be. Obviously, we're always doing that. But again, if we want to be strategic and reasonable in our achievement and in our growth, we've tried to set some targets that we feel are challenging, yet also attainable at the same time. So that's a delicate balance. Obviously, as we work through this, this is just a draft, this is a place to start, we can make adjustments as we go.
I was looking at the year one target, thinking that was a little low.
The first one of being of 65%?
From the 62.8 to 65.
Okay.
You can change it.
We can adjust. And again, I tried to look at the growth that we've made recently and again, trying to project that out over three years. But I'm open to, you know, to any change as it relates to these. Dr. Dorsey, do you have a thought as to what might be a better, a better goal?
Well, I mean, it looks like from 65 through 75, we're sort of jumping by fives. So, I mean, this would change your end result certainly. But would it be too much to raise the first one for year one by five to the 67?
So you would look at an annual growth of 5% each year then, or 5% over the baseline? Okay.
I mean, that's just one thought. I mean, that's what I was thinking when I looked at it, that it was a little low.
And historically, you know, working with school improvement teams, statistically, 5% has been seen as realistic, a realistic percentage of growth year over year. So I wouldn't have a problem with that.
But I think it's 5%, right? Not five points, right? Like what we have here is five points, not a, not 5%, right? For the years two and three.
Yeah, but it's going from 62.
Because the 62.8 to 65 actually is 5%.
Yeah. What I would change, that priority focus area to say, to increase percent proficient by, I would say, 15% if we're going to go with the five, you know, 5% annually from the baseline of, you know.
Okay.
And then what we try to do, and again, not that there aren't other student groups that we would carefully monitor. We disaggregate all of our data and monitor that very carefully. But these are the three core groups identified in the blueprint. So our students experiencing economic disadvantage, which is an expanded group. And in the past, we may have referenced students who received free or reduced meals. That economic disadvantage group is an expanded group in its simplest of explanations. But that's, that is our new reference to that student group. Our English learners, and then our students receiving special education services. Were the three target groups that we've identified. And again, still progress monitoring all of our other students. But to try to connect this plan with the blueprint, those are the three student groups identified.
Is there anything in here for math?
So elementary, no. But at the secondary level, it, the, when the second priority focus area gets into college and career readiness, or CCR, and that's determined by the students in 10th, the interim standard. And I'll maybe back up a quick step. So we currently have a standard established by MSDE in which they're in the midst of doing research and they've engaged with a partner to look at, is this the most accurate measure of college and career readiness? And they've done presentations and work. And my sense is that there are going to be additional measures. But the current interim measure is the number of students who've passed both the English 10 MCAP and then the Algebra 1 MCAP, which connects in that secondary, Mr. Whistler, that secondary math focus for us. And which we know, you know, we've identified as an area in need of improvement. Now, that backwards maps, and again, because we have an elementary indicator and a secondary indicator, that doesn't mean that we aren't going to be, we're going to be vertically aligned with that across all of our levels. These are global, big picture goals that then we will work backwards to improve. The, on the CCR piece, I fully envisioned that grade point average will be a factor in what is CCR moving forward. Our funding through the blueprint is tied to the percentage of students that we, or the number of students that have met that CCR standard. And correct me if I'm misspeaking in anything. And that's very much an indicator of, that is a big indicator for us because that measures obviously not only the success at the secondary level, but also what happens at the middle level as well also. And I don't want to forget our middle schools in this work as well. But oftentimes, our students are taking Algebra 1 as an eighth grader. That's an indicator in our previous strategic plan that we've worked hard to build and improved. And we've done that over time. But that still factors in that 10th grade assessment. Which is why if you look at, it's a bit complicated because we have those COVID years and we have one year where the students just needed to sit for the assessment. They didn't need to receive a specific score on the assessment. So it's a little bit difficult for this year's 11th graders who were 10th graders last year, which is when this metric was identified. But I fully envision as the, as the state redefines the CCR standard, it's probably going to include, you could meet the CCR standard based on your MCAP performance in reading and math. You could also potentially meet CCR by your grade point average. And then potentially maybe other indicators like your SAT performance, those kinds of things. But rarely does a 10th grader take the SAT. But it can happen, but that's not quite always a, most of the time, our students take that the following year.
I just wondered, because we have such a huge mission ahead of us with regards to trying to backfill those core mathematical concepts that our kids missed in sixth, seventh, and eighth. Because again, as a math teacher, I know those fundamental concepts are taught sixth, seventh, and eighth. And our kids now in high school miss that. And that's why they're struggling, clearly. They can't put processes together to solve problems because they don't know the connections between a percentage and a fraction and a coordinate geometry problem. Those are the things that we need to work on. And I'm just wondering if we need to develop, you know, I'm going to be really interested in seeing what KPIs you recommend we look at and monitor to see if we are putting those services in place and we are succeeding in improving MCAP scores in our math. Because I think it's a statewide crisis. And I'm talking to our legislators already on seeing if we can get the state legislature to act this January to provide school systems around the state more funding so we can hire more math resource teachers for our high schools because they need to be backfilled. So I'm just curious if we should develop another priority focus area that specifically relates to mathematics, backfilling these high schoolers in particular with those skills that they totally missed out on in their middle school journey.
And we can certainly do that. As Mr. Shokni said, you know, we, you know, we provided a skeletal version of a new strategic plan for you. But ultimately, this is your strategic plan. So whatever the board would like us to put in, we will put in as far as goals.
I agree with you, Mr. Whistler. I think, I think that we have to have something in here for math. And I think also science, right?
Focused on the high schools.
Yeah, the high schools really need that focus, they really need that backfill.
I agree, Mr. Whistler. So if you're okay with it, what I'd like to do is maybe go back and work with, work with staff. And it's that delicate balance of, is it, is the, is the key measure of success an indicator at the middle school level? Or is it something, you know, or is it that ninth grade year? It's that difficult piece of trying to figure out where are we going to truly, what indicator will give us, will let us know if our students are prepped and ready for the Algebra 1 MCAP? And it's, and honestly, I, and more anecdotally speaking, but it's, it's, our students who are taking Algebra 1 early, I think probably are, obviously, they're taking the course earlier because they've demonstrated progress along the way. But I also am concerned about our students that might take conceptual algebra as a ninth grader and what that looks like. And is that preparing them for the, you know, for the Algebra 1 course? So if you're okay with that, I'll go back and work. But I do, I agree in listening to the feedback, something we need to do that we're, to help, I still like the idea, if you're okay with it, the CCR piece, because that is a big global indicator of success. But to backwards map that a little bit further and is maybe it's an indicator, maybe it's a, you know, how we are performing on our end of course assessment at a particular grade level, maybe a middle school grade level. And then, so we can use that as an indicator, are we making progress towards the Algebra 1 piece? But I hear you, and that makes sense.
I'm not so worried about middle school. I mean, our amazing teachers have them now in middle school. So I know they're going to go over those great things with those kids. It's the high school students I'm really worried about. There's a tremendous decoding problem with kids being able to, like many kids don't even know that the word of means multiply. Those are the fundamental things that we really need to backfill our high schoolers on. And I'm just really worried that, you know, our kids can't decode word problems into mathematical statements. They can't, we teach them all kinds of processes, but they don't know the connections between these processes that the SAT or major tests make them co-mingle together to solve a problem on the SAT. But for me, it's the high school focus, so just for what it's worth.
Ms. Pataglia has her card up?
Yeah, I was gonna say, as a parent of a 10th grader, he's struggling. Like, he struggled last year tremendously in algebra. And I know he's going to struggle again this year. But I mean, it's also different from child to child. Is one thing we're using as an indicator as far as what we want to make sure our kids understand is some of the entry exams that colleges are requiring. Are we looking at that as like, when they do their placement test? When a student does a placement test for a college, are we looking at that as far as this is what colleges are looking for our students to understand?
Sure, sure. And that's, that's part of it, that's a, I think, a connection back to our blueprint as well too. As we do our, our students do their career planning and all of that work that's going to happen to help educate as to what, if I'm interested in a career, what do I need to do to be able to get there? And is it, you know, is it making sure as I backwards map that I have, I participate in specific courses? Is it that I need a foreign language? Is it that I need to be ready to take a licensure exam? Or is it a CTE component that's part of it as well too? So yeah, that's definitely part of that career planning piece that we know will be enhanced as part of the blueprint. One of the things John had mentioned to me as we were, as we were listening, we also don't know what the next, so we know that our implementation plan for this school year has been approved. We anxiously await and should be any, any minute or day because the timeline was August as to what the next year's plan is going to look like. So we have our plan developed for the 23, 24 school year. But the 24, 25 school year framework will be out. And I envision, or I anticipate, that it's going to include more, we're going to have to identify, or they will help us identify more specific measures for improving our student achievement. Which I'm certain, Mr. Whistler, that that algebra piece is going to be a part of that. And that math performance is going to be a part of that for us as well, as well as for other systems as well, and everyone in the state. So part of it is, I think, as we kind of get that, that might help us frame what indicator we want to be able to identify. Not that it has to be on there, but that's something else to think in mind too. But I hear you loud and clear in that, we need a, we need a secondary measure of success, a high school measure of success to make sure that we're, we're making our progress in the area of math. And I'll go back and work with staff and see if I can come up with a specific, if I'm hearing you correct, a specific priority focus area related to math.
And the reason why I brought up the entry exams for colleges is because there was a couple parents I heard from last year, like their students were in trig or calculus or whatever, and they took their entrance exams for colleges to see where they placed, and they failed them. So now they're back to square one, taking algebra in college and they're not getting credit for it. So I think that's like a one big indicator, you know, I want to make sure we're looking at too, you know, when we, when we say college and career ready, that we are looking at what is, what type of exam do the colleges have for these kids? You know, I mean, and it is kind of disheartening when you hear, well, my kid was in trig 4.0, but they failed the math exam for a college. So it's kind of like, okay, something does not seem right there. So I want to make sure that we're also looking at that as an indicator too, as to this is what the expectations are.
Yeah, a lot of people don't realize that the SAT math, it only has one trig question on it. This SAT math is sixth grade through 10th grade math, that's what it is. So, and that's why a lot of our juniors and seniors are struggling with the SAT because they missed those critical skill sets taught in middle school, just period. That's, that's, that explains those results, in my view.
It also goes back to why we need to make sure that we have common assessments in all of our courses, especially our math courses, to make sure that the trig assessment in school A is the same trig assessment in school B. So that when our students do graduate, they know and we know what they really have been able to accomplish.
And Mr. Whistler, I completely agree with you on the, you know, the choice of, just as a little bit of background, the choice of the percentage of students that scores proficient for eighth grade Algebra 1, that wasn't, that wasn't necessarily the specific measure that we cared about. But it was, it was the fact that we knew that, you know, there were, we had smaller percentages of kids taking Algebra 1 in eighth grade in our county than some of our surrounding counties. And, you know, when they would take the test surrounding that, like 100% of them were passing it. So we're saying, we're not pushing our kids or providing rigorous enough curriculum for certain of our kids, you know, by the time they get to eighth grade. So we made that one of our measures, knowing that we fully had to backwards map a lot, right? To get there, to hit that. So I think your point, now with the pandemic throwing a completely different dynamic into everything, that maybe the one focus area, it needs to be high school related. But knowing that there's going to be a lot of backwards mapping from there as well.
Yeah, mathematical modeling, decontextualizing word problems into mathematical statements. Those, again, tying all of the procedures our teachers teach them together so that they can co-mingle those skills and solve a problem, those are the huge gaps I see when I tutor kids for SAT math. So again, I apologize for injecting in my personal, as a, as a, as a math teacher, but, yeah. So I appreciate you looking into it.
Yep, well, that makes perfect sense to add something in. I'll work with that group back there to get it in.
Yeah, I'm looking at Mr. Hicks saying, do you still have that rivalry with your counterpart in Howard County? Okay, keep it up.
And then again, to tie it in with what Ms. Pataglia said, you know, we really need, I think, more funding from the state so that we can do extended learning opportunities, working with private institutions like maybe Kumon or Matnasium or, you know, whatever company A, B, or C is. But we really need to provide resources, not only to our teachers, but those ELO after school programs to get them where they need to be. It's just, we have, we have a tremendous problem in this state math scores. And I, and I hope the governor's listening and hears me. We really need help at the Board of Education level.
All right, pillar two?
All right.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Okay, I didn't see your card.
I just have one more thing to add about when we look at SAT scores and how to prepare for the SAT specifically. I took it last week, so that's a sensitive topic for me. But something that is, something that is really important to look at when we are talking about the SAT is that some colleges in the recent years are no longer requiring the SAT. And that's something that has changed how students perceive the SAT as a test in general. When we look back to 10, 15 years ago, the SAT was something that if you didn't score well, you wouldn't get into the college you wanted to. And now that that's no longer what's going to happen when you're applying to colleges, it's changed students' priorities over time as to what they want from the SAT or whether their score truly matters. So I think something that we can look at in, when we're creating these tests is sort of make sure, or at least try to include, that these questions are similar to the SAT standards. It just, because it is teaching, Algebra 1, Algebra 2, geometry. These are just basic math classes that are taken in high school. So if, if we just have those similar test results and test answers and test questions in our MCAP tests, that would be really helpful for students going forward. in our MCAP tests, that would be really helpful for students going forward.
See, I think that's a great point. A lot of, I'm going through this with my daughter right now, right, like, a lot of the universities, the SAT scores are, are, you know, optional to provide, and they basically say, only provide your scores if you, like, if you really knocked it out of the park, and that's it, otherwise, just leave them off. And I think that a lot of that is, you know, because of the pandemic, right, like, kids were really struggling with the SATs or not even able to take them in some instances, right? Do we, do, do you think that the test optional nature of SATs will go away? Like, the further, the further away we get from the pandemic, do you think universities will go back to that being an important entrance piece?
If I answer that question, I will say, I don't think the SAT is no, longer gonna be something that universities are looking to specifically. A lot more times nowadays, universities are looking towards student achievement through extracurriculars and achievements outside of simply an academic structure, and moving forward, something that I even wanted to kind of pull up on when we look at the pillars, if we simply talk about academic achievement, we are also forgetting extracurricular achievement and achievement through leadership positions for students, which is why student success going forward should be our main goal, more than just academic achievement, because yes, that is a baseline, and yes, that's what we're looking for through test scores, but something that we can't exactly calculate is extracurricular achievement. Students who are doing really well in their community, students who are working jobs, who, who are trying to babysit their neighbors' friends, we're looking at those types of achievements as well, students becoming a good member of their community going forward.
And that is a part of the blueprint, which is, which is great. And, you know, we're trying to just pull some things out for here from the blueprint for us to focus on, but I, I completely agree with that, and I also agree with your assessment that in the future, colleges are not going to be looking as much toward standardized test scores.
I feel they're gonna look for the whole student.
How well-rounded.
The well-rounded student, not, not, not the straight A student.
Right.
Not the one that stays home and reads books, but they want to look at, what have they done in their extracurricular, are they 4H? Are they SGA? Are they volunteer here? Are they at the Girl Scouts, the Boy Scouts? That, they, they're looking for the whole child now.
Absolutely.
Which is much better.
Absolutely, because I think there's a lot more opportunity, too. So you, you have a student who, you know, they just academically, they're Cs, but that's, you know, that's all they try, at least try to get. I mean, they try, probably really, really work hard and try, but that's all they can get, but outside of school, they are so involved in their community, they're doing stuff with other groups, they're being a mentor for kids, you know, for good behavior and helping to clean a stream or, you know, whatever their extras are, and colleges are appreciating them a little bit more. They're like, look, we get it, you know? Not everybody can get straight As. You know, you're trying, but look at everything you're doing outside of that, that will make a difference in society later on down the road. So, I mean, yeah, with COVID, SATs kind of took a backseat, and I've noticed that a lot, too, a lot of kids are not taking the SATs. It's not a priority for them right now, like, you know what? No, I'm, I'm busy, busy teaching somebody how to ride a horse. You know, I don't have time to study for SATs, so those, those things, like, a lot of kids, they, they think that now, and...
Although Westminster High was packed on Saturday for the SATs.
We can definitely look at that, that SATs are no longer a priority as a bad thing, but I want to look at it as something that's good, too, something that can encourage students to look forward on other things.
Yep.
Yeah, there are some institutions that will still, will continue to use, for example, your military service academies, your Ivy League schools. So it's, it's something that definitely doesn't have as much of a focus, but it still needs to be there, you're right.
And that's where that career planning is so important, so a student, you know, has that goal in mind, can backwards map if they're, you know, depending upon what that pathway it is that they want to go down, and then helping that student get there along the way, because each pathway is very different, as we all know, and its prerequisites and, and ultimate requirements of, of where to go. So, and again, I think, you know, obviously, you know, there are some definite challenges with the blueprint, but there's, that is a, a potential positive in the fact that, you know, we have even more career counseling and development that'll be part of the, that'll be part of our, our students', you know, experiences moving forward with the help of being able to do just this, which is, which is good. All right, pillar two, I'm, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I was just gonna say, like, I, I agree with everything that's been said. I, I think that, you know, we still need to keep the strong focus on the academic achievement. Like, the, the other pieces are almost kind of like a bolt-on, right, like, supporting of that, but we can't, can't let the achievement slip, because there, there needs to be that baseline, like, minimum threshold of proficiency that, that we have to get our kids to.
Absolutely.
And we've been away from it too long.
So pillar two has two objectives as well, the first being, communication between CCPS and the community demonstrates transparency, trust, and respect. That's something that's always been important to us, and, and, and that's continued in this work here. Objective two, CCPS partners with local government, businesses, and agencies to support student learning. Ms. Pataglia, that's where, I don't want to skip it, but I'll come down to it, but that's where the, our apprenticeships and internships come into play, and if you look and see, we have a baseline of two apprenticeships in our system. We have significant internships going on, we have 385 internships going on, but there's a big difference between the apprenticeship and the internship, and you can see there's, there's modest expansions there, and, and part of that challenge, although we are ready, willing, and able, it is building the comfort level and the knowledge level of our business community and our partners within the community to be willing to take kind of that next step to an apprenticeship, and the big difference is that there's, there is, there's funding, there's compensation involved for the apprenticeship as opposed to the, to the internship. A big piece of this also, that's kind of part of this, this component of the, of the blueprint, is our students who earned the industry certification in CTE as well. That's always been a strength of ours as we have worked, and I think we've always done well with that, which, again, I, probably not necessarily, I mean, obviously something we measure and, and will always continue to do so, but it's truly our number of apprenticeships that I think really will get to that second objective. And then to back up a little bit more, we know that we have valued the feedback from our community advisory council, and we've made some strides in the last strategic plan, very positive work there, but we're not quite to where we have every school actively participating all the time, and we know that that's something that's been important to the board in the past, so that's why it's in there, and it's, and it, and again, just a draft, we can make any tweaks or, or changes, but those were the two key priority focus areas that we were recommending for pillar two.
Have we surveyed the schools that have not had participants in the CAC meetings to see if there's a reason why they haven't had participation?
Yeah, I, I'm not quite sure as to the, as to, to the why, but we can always, I think it's, it's number one, finding, the, the, finding a parent or guardian who has the commitment and then the, the time available to be able to do that. I think that's the, that's a difficult piece. We, we know we have families that want to be able to, to, to be engaged, but do they have the time and opportunity to be able to, to do that? And then, you know, working with the schools to make sure, because a lot of times, schools will identify someone who has interest, but it's making sure that we can get that person to, to, to the meetings and they can be regular attendees there. And I know, I know Ms. Gaddis isn't here this evening, but I know she's worked very hard to try to build the engagement and then the participation of folks, and I think that's steadily increased, and as that goes, I think that will continue to grow with her approach, but I, I don't know, Doc, I mean, we, we have not specifically said to schools, you know, tell us why, but I think it's less of a case that they haven't been able to find someone, more of the case if maybe the, the person that they've been able to identify, you know, has not been able to regularly attend, and maybe in some of those instances, a backup would be a good or something, those other strategies there, but, but no, not a specific survey, to answer your question.
And would we consider other options for attending the meetings? Would we consider viral, or virtual, I'm sorry, virtually attending the meetings?
I know that was something we had briefly discussed last year, was, you know, having a virtual option, and I think it's just making sure that we have the staff available to, to get that hooked up. I think that was just the, the one concern.
But I, I think they like that one-on-one.
Yes, sure, they do, yeah.
And I have, I'm, I'm not a part of that committee, but I stepped in once or twice for her, and that one-on-one in person is very, very important.
If you give the viral option, then you have to be willing to accept most participants being virtual.
Yeah, I, I, I really feel that it needs to be in person, yes.
I would say, you know, the family life committee that we have, we do have a, a virtual option for those folks to attend, and we, we always have, we have a quorum usually in the room, and then we have maybe four or five virtually, just because they, they couldn't make it physically to the room. So I actually think, but we still always have way more in the room than we do virtually, so.
Yeah, I'm just thinking of the parents.
That is something to know, I didn't know, yeah, I didn't know you had that option.
Well, I was gonna say, I was just thinking about the parents who maybe couldn't get babysitters, but they'd be okay with being on their laptop or computer in one room while the kids are sort of in another room.
But the participation has really increased.
Yes.
Yes.
It has really jumped leaps and bounds, it really has, and that's good to see.
Dr. Dorsey, that's feedback I'll definitely share with, with Ms. Gaddis for sure.
Okay, just questioning.
Okay. So if we're done with this, can I make a comment? I don't know if it should be two or three. So I'll make this comment now, going back to what I said earlier, again, the business side of me, and again, if we don't need it, we don't need it, you let me know, I'm just offering some suggestions, but from a business perspective, putting in something in there about vendors, suppliers, I'm just curious whether we do enough to ensure we maximize the pool of people that can bid on our contracts. If it's something that's not a problem, let me know, but is there something that we can do to help cut down the costs, especially in this inflationary environment where things are going up, up, up? But I just don't know if it's something that we should look at as far as putting in a KPI, I mean, are we, are we, again, are we seeing enough people bid on our stuff? Are, are we getting enough competitive bids to, to, to drive down prices, to save money for the system?
John?
I, I feel like we are, I'll invite Mr. Burke as well to the podium if he wants to. I'd say on any award of bids on a given month, you might pull out one item and say, well, that, there was a low response, but in general, we've, we've done well. Some of our successes, I, I think fiscally over the last couple decades have been in the areas of energy and, and controlling inflationary costs and, and employee insurances and that sort of thing. I know that, you know, Mr. Burke's new to us, but not new to sort of this world, and I, I know he has some longer-term visions for, for ways in which we make sure we're in contact with and grow the, the vendor or the potential vendor community. I, I don't know that, I'm putting him on the spot because I don't think he would have a, sort of a measurable indicator to share tonight, but we can, why don't, why don't I work with Rob and his team on that?
Again, I'm not saying you need to develop anything, I'm just...
Or he is willing to share.
Is, is there something worthwhile that we can do to, to maybe track and try to lower costs within the infrastructure?
Sure, always interested in continuing to, to develop that and make sure we're getting good competition. We certainly comply with state law and how we do it, but there's always room to improve that. The, the biggest driver is the statewide, what they call Emma, the statewide platform to post all bids, and that's really where vendors are usually looking, so, but we're always open and looking for, you know, competing, getting good transparency in how we put those out, so we'll continue to do that.
And again, maybe it's not necessary, but I just thought I'd bring it up. I'm just trying to see if we can save money somewhere.
I might actually go under pillar number four.
Yeah, but something like that, maybe it's a, yeah.
From like an efficiency and, and, you know, minimizing costs on, on projects and things like that.
We've got to do something to try to drive down costs and increase competition, but you can only do so much, I get it.
We'll, we'll explore, bring back ideas to the next discussion.
Okay.
Nick is reminding me of the time as, as we move into, move into pillar three. I'll try to speak quickly, but, but mainly just to give you, you time to respond and, and have conversation. So, as mentioned earlier, this is a pillar where we are suggesting sort of a different focus of the objectives. Both, both of the two objectives propose align very specifically with the blueprint, and the first one, and this is an area that we actually touched on in the conversation as it flowed at the last, at the last meeting you had with the commissioners, we and other school systems here in this state and all across, across the country find ourselves back at a place where there is truly a national teacher shortage, and we are, you know, we're, we're facing challenges at a level that we've never faced them before, and one of those is to make sure that the highest percentage of our, of our teaching workforce as possible holds a professional certificate from the Maryland State Department of Vet, and we're at an all-time high number in this area, and so we do need to focus on not only the recruitment part of that, but also the support part of that, like, how, how do we support those folks who either come to us, and, and by the way, just for the sake of the discussion, the range of why you may not hold a professional certificate yet is wide and vast, so it could be as far-reaching as somebody who is changing career, and we still need that person, we need that person with a biology degree who, who wants to dedicate their life to teaching our students, but who has to go through a, a master's in education program or some other certification program, up to and including a teacher who could have been with us for a very long period of time and simply didn't take or didn't take the correct thing they needed to renew their certificate, and they're going to do that as soon as possible, and they're gonna be right back on a professional certificate in, in, in six months. So it's, you know, that, there's some, something to be discussed about what that number means, but in general, this is, I think, a reflection of, of the teacher shortage, and so the strategies that would underlie this would, would drive our recruitment program, our recruitment strategies and our support and induction of new teachers, and so we, we want to shift this to, to, we would like to make this a shift in focus in the next iteration of the plan, and then secondly, and very specifically tied to the blueprint, specifically the teacher career ladder in the blueprint, is the fact that, that one, one component that that entire career ladder in the statute and the law is predicated upon is the number of our teachers who hold something called National Board Certification. We have a relatively small percentage of teachers who hold National Board Certification comparatively, so we, we need to do a lot of work to bolster those numbers, to bolster the support for folks to get there, and, and also, you know, ultimately, you can't fill the roles of the career ladder, the higher levels of the teacher leadership roles if you haven't met that prerequisite, and so there, there's a lot of requirement to get there. That being said, I want to go, go back to the first, or the, you know, the first discussion or the last version of the, of the plan, we are not foregoing our efforts for diversity at all, and in fact, they are embedded more in the blueprint as a law than they have ever been embedded in state law, and so inherent in the statutory definitions of the career ladder is that our workforce must reflect the demographics of our community, that is our students, and that we need to be very attentive, very attentive in ways maybe we've never really been before in terms of assignment and placement of teachers and promotion up the ranks of the career ladder. So that doesn't go away, and as we talk about, back and forth about the data dashboard, those metrics will exist under the blueprint, some already do in forms, form of a baseline, and so we would envision linking to those metrics as part of our dashboard, so our dashboard, but kind of an external link to the, to the diversity and hiring report and information that exists statewide, and I feel like I'm talking really fast because I'm looking at that clock, but I also want to make sure you have a chance to respond.
I have a quick question, I'm so sorry.
You go right ahead.
Again, these are just numbers to me, but if you can give me context, you know, as far as conditionally certified educators, how do we compare to other counties in the state?
We compare very favorably.
So like, we're, we're one of the best as far as least amount of...
We are one of the best, we remain one of the best, but this is historically a new place for us, and so I, I, I would suspect that there might be a number of counties who would say, I'd love to have that, maybe not that whole number, but that percentage of my staff, and we've never been there, and so while we still, we're favorable, this is a new place for us to work from, and so, you know, it's not enough that, it's great that we're back on the road recruiting face-to-face again, it has to be that and, and a lot more, and Ernesto and his team are, are trying to lead, what are those other strategies? And then it's not just recruitment, it's, it's, it's always been retention, but it's sort of support during induction in a way and a level in which we've never, maybe we've never had to before, but we surely do have to now.
Yep, and another KPI that I think we should talk about, especially as we move forward with blueprint and potential shifting around of resources, I am really going to be interested in our teacher-student ratios. That's gonna be a very big indicator for me that I think we should keep an eye on, so I didn't see anything in here about that, but again, just something to take back and think about.
Would you be comfortable with that as a dashboard item?
Absolutely.
Okay, and I assume you mean school by school, because overall, the, the ratio isn't...
I'll leave that up to you and the staff, but, I mean, I, I don't, we don't want to see a huge thing, but like, maybe middle school student-teacher ratio, elementary student-teacher ratio, because I am really, or maybe by geographic region, southeast, northwest, you know, but just something so that we can keep an eye on student-teacher ratio as we evolve through this blueprint journey.
And we could talk more in time, I know we're running out of time now. I would say that where I'm, where I would be concerned, that we'll see the most dramatic impact... impact just to a metric like that will be after Dr. McCabe has to sort of realign resources across the school. So I would think system-wide, if we, if we rolled it to the aggregate, our ratio is not going to be different. It may even be better with the influx of comp ed money this year. But if you take a, a particular school, say Liberty High School, their student-teacher ratio is going to look dramatically different in fiscal '25 than it did in '24.
And again, maybe we don't have a target, but we just have a monitor.
Well, we'll have a baseline for, yeah. And we have those data over time, but we'll have a baseline for this year and we can measure the impact of, of sort of the realignment of resources going forward. And we're, we're happy to make that a dashboard item.
And potentially we can, just thinking out loud, we could connect that back to some of our academic achievement indicators like looking at class sizes in grade three, looking at class sizes in our Algebra I courses. And again, I think that, that there's power in being able to connect. So we can take a look at our class size and our achievement rates and, and is there a...
Yeah, I don't want our teachers blamed because we're forcing them to teach in a class of 45 people and compare them to their colleagues who maybe has a class of 10 people. I just, it's just, I just, I would really love to see the connection there.
And on a different subject, I want to keep our educators, but I want to remind everybody, please keep up your certifications because that has never been brought up a whole lot. But I am telling you, don't get to your ninth year and say, I didn't know so that I needed 30 hours or whatever. And keep on going because we, we need you, we, we want to keep you, you're doing a great job. And I just want to make sure that, you know, and I've, I've seen that happen. It's heartbreaking, you know, I'll put it off, I'll put it off. Please do not put your certifications off. HR's here, we're here to help you. We want you to progress. So please take every opportunity because I've seen the downside of that and it's...
Great public service announcement.
Yeah, okay, well.
We're here to help, but it is your professional license.
Yes, yes, it's your license. Yes, yes, yes. It is your certification. And I've seen it happen and it's.
Don't ignore Kelly Keith when she calls.
And there are, so I gave, I gave those two sort of extremes. There, there's a third example that may matter, which is maybe there's a person who taught and they took off a number of years perhaps for child rearing, childcare, and now they're returning to the profession, but they need six recent credits. It's so, there's a continuum of why somebody's not professionally certified, but this number is largely driven by the teacher shortage rate.
I just want to make, that was a good public announcement, please.
And I would like to add, certainly we had said earlier, what gets measured, what's visible stands the greatest chance of getting done. I would really like to see the diverse system being placed back at this level for our strategic plan. I hear you saying that again, it's certainly inherent in the blueprint. But again, you know, we need to have it visible at this level as well so we can see where we are, to make sure that, you know, our staff is reflective of the county and system community. And we had also talked about it being reflective of the student, certainly, community.
Are you suggesting, Dr. Dorsey, revising the first objective and measure or adding a third one?
We could add. I mean, I think the first one can certainly stand on its own as far as all of our teacher positions, but I would like to see a reflection of the diversity in the system.
Almost like pulling what we had in the old plan.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And is that, so we won't have that on the dashboard, we'll have that here. And is that comfortable for everybody, sort of the metric from the last plan? Just?
That's fine.
Okay. We will do so.
And Steve, kind of going back to your point about teacher to student ratio, also thinking about like class size and, and so I understand, like I, I think it makes sense to have it on a dashboard, but we may also want to think about something at a strategic level of, you know, we really want to keep track of that.
Have it visible.
Have it visible, exactly. For the exact points that you were making, Nick, I was very excited to hear about, you know, looking at the correlation between academic achievement and class size, right? Like I don't, I don't think there's a single report out there that shows that, you know, increasing class size is going to improve student achievement, but we can actually show the correlations and, and impact on the results in our own system.
But I do want to say something, especially in the high school. You may have an English class of X a number, you may have a phys ed class of 45, you may have a special ed class of 10. So I don't want people to misunderstand what we're doing there, Mr. Whistler, because, yeah, I just, you know, we just don't have classes of 20. Every, you know, it's very diversified on, on every count of what, what the child is taking. And we need to be, you know, aware of that because phys ed has 45 and the English has 20. But I just want to make that point. Because I know that happens and when people see that, they may not understand that.
That's a great point. And, but I, I think, I, I don't, we, we couldn't give a global class size. We'd have to drill it down to, like I'll, I keep coming back to a third grade ELA classes.
Right, that's.
Like I think we can definitely, you know, do that. But at the same time, it's, you'd almost have to do, for, for, you'd almost have to look at it by, by school because again, in the, in the aggregate, it'll all, it'll all balance out if we just, if we had, you know, number of teachers divided by number of students.
When you're just taking an average, it gets muddied down.
It won't show what I think we're concerned about showing.
It's what they want.
Which is the impact by school on the class size piece.
So class size is, to me, distinct from ratio. And maybe we, we should take some time to look at what they look like.
And, and the course offering. So there's a bunch of variants there. It's, that's not, yes. You're not going to just say, oh, there's 20 in English class and there's three in ag. That, that doesn't, that's.
I think either way, whether it's ratio or class size, it, if it's not shown at the school level, it's not going to, it's not going to sort of tell the story that I think.
No, it's not going to, and that's exactly right. It will not tell the story.
Go back and work on it and see.
Yeah, they'll have to figure that out. But I just wanted to make, you know, people be aware of that. You know, you look at the number of teachers, the number of students, that's not how it works.
It's going to pop right out of us on the class size report that we see in January, November.
Yes.
November, okay, thank you. Couldn't remember the timeline.
I'm sorry, but I just had to add that. I know we've got to move on.
And, and then we've, we've hit on some topics of pillar four already, but, but the, the first objective is creates a school, creates school climates to support student learning, which we know is, is important. We struggled with this one. Where, where I landed as a recommendation and a starting point, surveys often are effective in this area, but at the same time, creating surveys and, and our staff have a lot to do, we just don't want to layer on one more thing. But we do have the, we do have the, the Maryland School Survey. There's some positives to that, but there's also some challenges to that as well.
Don't give me start on that one.
I know, I know. And I, with caution, I put this in here as a, as a suggested starter point. What we know is a challenge is we, we don't, we have, there, there are different domains. And what I did pull out for this one was our achievement, and, and we don't have the data from last school year. So I use data from the '21, '22 school year. I anticipate we'll have last year's survey data in the very near future, but I use it kind of as a starting point or just a discussing, discussion topic. But in the safety domain, we have student ratings and then we have staff ratings as well. And it's a scale of one to 10. And on the scale, nine or above is the most favorable perception, but a 5.5 to a nine is a more favorable perception as defined by the, by the, by the tool. So I put that on there. Again, it's hard to measure climate in a, in a way other than a survey. I just don't have a, a good recommendation. So at the same time, I didn't want to create a survey or do something new that would be, you know, create challenges or give our staff one more thing. The staff is already doing this, so I think, you know, obviously we can get data from it, but I also think the data is, could be interpreted differently. Again, we, we don't know the questions that are asked, we have sample questions that are asked, we don't have the exact questions that are asked. So that there's a challenge that we talked about, that's, we did a presentation last school year on this data and we talked about some of the challenges associated with it. So I'll just pause and open it up. And, and again, we know climate's important, but is this the, the best measure? Is there a different measure? Thoughts on that one?
We definitely know that student discipline and suspension is not what we want to use for climate.
We need to track it.
Yes.
But we don't want to have targets as part of the strategic plan.
Right.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Sounds, it, it's a, it sends a complex message when.
I don't want us to make another survey. There's just, you know dag on well, as, as everybody else knows, there are certain sections on there that are very subjective on there. And we don't need to reinvent the wheel, so if we use it, we use it. But you always have to have that open mind that it is very subjective. So if Suzie and Johnny both come in together and one's happy and one's sad or mad at the world that day, you're going to get a different number than you did the next day if, if, if the role was reversed.
And that's the nature of surveys.
And that's, that's a survey. So we have to.
You can't base strategic plans on the basis of subjective surveys. I mean, I understand the difficulty of it, but we got to find something that's a more objective.
But I, we don't, we don't need to invent a survey for us because we have not, no, we don't need that. We're just.
I struggle with this one to be honest.
Well, yes, and I understand.
Yeah, because I was just going to ask, like the bullying part, like is, is that bullying that they've experienced or is it the concern of bullying? Because then you even see about staff, well, you know, you want to ask like, well, obviously if a staff member's been bullied by another staff member, I mean, we obviously aren't going to tolerate any type of bullying whatsoever. So it's like, okay, so what exactly does?
Yeah, the descriptor for the student response would be, a topic describes the degree to which students feel students are teased, picked on, or bullied, cyberbullied, whether in general or specifically about their race, ethnicity, cultural background, religion, or ability. So it's a degree to which students feel. That doesn't necessarily mean that they've seen it or experienced, but what is the, you know, what's the student perception? I would attempt to defend.
Yeah, because those things can be, you know, depending upon the, the individual. I mean, it's, that's the, so like, yeah, I see exactly what Ms. Herbert is saying there because it's physical safety too. I mean, that's something completely different. Is it because you're, you were attacked by another student or, or is it you're concerned about what, you know, you've heard on the news or social media that might have happened two days prior? So there's, yeah, yeah, the different aspects of it, that, that does bother me.
I know, I, I understand why you, why you did this. I do, and I, and I get it.
We'll keep working on it to see if there's something else.
Yeah. So you have to think about it, but, yeah. For us to create a new survey, absolutely not because, you know, we don't need to do that.
And Mr. O'Neal has kind of already hit on the last two.
Yeah, I'm over, over time.
Yeah.
So, you know, obviously, well, you know, continuing the, the work around our exercises for around safety and school security. And then we've talked about the FCI piece and maintaining that as being part of it. Okay. All right.
And thank you for doing this. I mean, this, I mean, with everything else going on, blueprint and you're doing this and.
We've got a lot of things going on. The only final thing is as part of our regulations, we will identify our reporting schedule. The, the challenge, it's hard to do, most of the, the measures that we have are, are kind of end-of-year measures. And it'd be, it's very difficult to, to report kind of mid-year on how we're doing with some things. So I, I think that's, well, something to think about, I'm open to feedback, but I, I see a lot of this being maybe more summer reporting if we're looking at the interval versus during the school year reporting. Obviously, I want to make sure that we're providing progress and updates and those kinds of things. But, but some of the data points, we won't, like, you know, our MCAP data, for example, you know, we, we typically don't receive that till, you know, till school's out or at the end of the year.
We're supposed to receive it in April.
We're, we're, so yeah, it's supposed to be, we, we keep getting assurances that that's going to be a little bit different. And we know in some of the, some of the areas, especially our, our government exam, that's just going to be a very defined, quick turnaround for that because that's part, it's a required 20% of the student's final grade. So some of the assessments, we know that we might, you know, we, we should be getting quicker, but it's also hard. So the, in a nutshell, I didn't expect to have dates, but we will, we will work on a plan for reporting. But I would say most likely the reporting will happen typically over the, in the summer or the later months in the, in the school year.
I would like you to consider, you know, we do need to do annual evaluations for staff. And so those, those, those measurements would be helpful in evaluating superintendent on